The Strategic Planning Committee for Tuesday, June 1st, 2021. Let the record show that all, almost all committee members are present with the exception of Alderman Gonzalez and Alderman Witt. I'll make a motion to approve the previous committee meeting dated May 18th. Could I get a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Robinson. All in favor? I opposed. Motion carries. So, we have unfinished business. PL 7-21 by Alderman Crawford to form and recruitment retention, rebranding Task Force for the City of Olian. Again, this is just a working title, but what I've done tonight, for tonight, is met with the mayor as well as our community development coordinator, Ms. Carrie Kerper, and asked to dive into more of the comprehensive development plan process. So, something that we've been informed, the previous one was done in 2005, and usually it takes between a year to two years of work ahead of time, and it's a 20-year plan. And so, I think this is probably the best avenue for us to pursue what the next 20 years of Olian is going to look like. And so, Carrie's done a lot of work, and probably out of those sitting around here, is probably the only one who has experience of the 2005 comprehensive planning process. So, we're fortunate to have her here, and so I've asked her to kind of give us a bit of a presentation here tonight, what to expect, what goes into it, and just try to learn as much about this process and what we need to do now to get our ducks in a row for the long strategic planning process that comes down the next year or two. Carrie?
So, I'll go into the funding part of it. I'm gonna get that part out of the way. So, Empire State Development announced a couple of weeks ago that the CFA process, the consolidated funding application process, that it did not occur last year due to COVID and the state budget. However, applications are being accepted this year. Specific to this program, there's up to $1 million available, and it's coming from the New York State Department of State under the Smart Growth Comprehensive Planning Grant Program. So, it's going to be extremely competitive because there's only $1 million available statewide. And this is the first time this funding has been specifically allocated for a comprehensive development plan. And it's a maximum of state assistance that you can apply for is up to $100,000. And if you request more than that, you'll automatically be disqualified and not scored. So, I would make the recommendation that we would go after the full $100,000. Another thing that's unheard of is the Department of State would cover 90%. So, they would cover 90,000. The city would be responsible for its local share of 10,000. So, the total project cost would be $100,000. And again, it would be a reimbursement program how the grants are generally done. There are MWBE requirements on the program and the project. So, there would be the typical 30%, 15%. There would be a split allocated, 15% for minority business enterprises, the other 15% for the women who own business enterprises. So, the total MWBE goal that we would have to meet is $30,000 in funding. There's also a 6% service-disabled veteran-owned business goal for this, so that would be 6,000. So, it'd be a total of 36,000 for all of those minority and disabled veteran goals. Applications are due July 30th by 4:00 p.m. And I just wanted to give background on the previous plan that was done in 2005. The city had originally hired, at that time, it was called AKRF Consultants. And it was ultimately, their Western New York office was closed, and eventually the work came to a halt. So, they ended up having to subcontract it out to Richard Swizz, and it was Richard Swizz Government Consulting Services that ultimately did the majority of that comprehensive development plan, the entire process, and completed it. The process generally takes 18 months. It shouldn't go past 24. And just how the process works, you were given a document tonight. That's my first work in progress on a request for proposals for consulting firms. And so, how it would go, I mean, if we apply and we're awarded the funding, the governor normally makes the awards. He always issues for the fall. Typically, it ends up being November, December is when the awards are generally made. But what would happen? So, we would go under contract with the Department of State. And this RFP, I mean, we have time to fine-tune it. I would like to have it pretty much finalized in July, so that way I can put it as an attachment, you know, to the Department of State, so that they see that we're willing, even ready to enact this once we go under contract with them, if that happens. So, what would happen is we would issue that RFP, and then there would be a review committee that would ultimately review the responses that are received. Then that committee, how I wrote it in the RFP, could interview up to three firms. Generally, based on scoring, you'll know who your task force are. So, from there, we would hire that consultant, and then the mayor is responsible for appointing a special advisory board. Back in 2005, we simply called it the Comprehensive Development Plan Task Force. And that committee is usually derived of local officials, elected officials, various department heads, community leaders, CEOs, business owners, citizens, and so on. It's generally comprised of 15 to 20 people. All meetings are open to the public. There is a huge emphasis on smart growth principles, especially in this funding round, and it should be written that way. And there should be a lot of community input. There will be various workshops and public meetings held so we can get, you know, ideas from the public. They can look at the branding materials, I mean, whatever we have the consultant do and we put out there. So then, from there, the scope of work will begin, and those public meetings will happen throughout this process, what I'm going to go through. So, after the scope of work begins, the consultant will then do the project initiation, the view of the current plans and conditions. From there, they'll formulate the direction of the comprehensive development plan and how we're going to tailor that. Then they'll actually go into technical investigations that will occur, whether it has to do with environmental, et cetera, whatever technical stuff we need them to look into. And from there, they'll draft the comprehensive plan, and then we'll take it for a draft review. It'll go before that task force, and they'll be a part of the entire process. And then, we would do the final comprehensive plan report. That's when it'll come before the full council will need to hold a public hearing. And then, the consultant would prepare an EIS, which is the environmental impact statement, and all materials that are necessary for carrying out the SEACR process. It would be Type 1 action, so it would have a 30-day comment period. It would be a coordinated review. We'd send it to the funding agency, the county planning for, the state planning for, the zoning for, and various boards to make sure that it was a full faith effort in the SEACR process. And then ultimately, the council would be able to adapt the plan, and then that's when the city as a whole would execute that implementation approach. That was a lot.
So, a couple questions, certainly open it up to, a couple questions and certainly open it up to whoever, Alderman, as well. So, you said there is a cap, essentially, $100,000 on the grant that is available through the New York State. Is that, is that your estimate as far as what the total cost would likely be? Is $100,000, or what would you say it's going to be closer to for us?
I did some research, and I called other communities, and so a city of our size could be anywhere from $100,000 to $150,000. It really generally depends on your scope of work. So, I tried to be fair in what it would look like. I'm hoping that $100,000 would cover what we're asking a consultant to do. And there's always room for negotiations, you know, with consulting firms, or you just cut work out in order if we're over the $100,000, or if the council thinks, you know, that is the word we can.
So, you said the deadline for the grant application is in July, is that right?
Yes, July 30th by 4:00 p.m.
So, as far as the consultant goes, what is it, what is their specialty? What is, what is it about the consultant? Is this, there's consultants out there that essentially just do this for communities?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, you know, they'll have a planning team, there'll be the environmental team, they'll have different divisions within their firms.
And ultimately, the comprehensive development plan gives us a blueprint for what projects Olian would undertake for the next 20 years?
Yes. Yeah, a lot of our visions, our goals, our marketing, it is our all-encompassing plan. And, you know, I want people to, I mean, it's always online. I want other communities to see what we're doing. I want us to be that trendsetter to move it forward and to actually reach those goals, meet them, and exceed them. I mean, if you think about some of the things we've done even in the last, you know, decade, roundabouts where never even in our comprehensive development plan. So, I mean, we've progressed so far, and that's something that's important to have a consultant look at as well, is to have that section, do you have a suggestion, even in the implementation approach? Do you have future things that we're not thinking of here? And those are some of the things that they can specialize and help us with.
So, if we were to start planning today, coming up on midway through 2021, and if our plan is good up until 2025, and it can take, to be conservative, just to say, two years, then really we should be looking at 2022 to 2023 to start implementing and have the team in place, right, and start the process?
Yeah, so even with the Department of State, they will not even go past two years for the funding award. So, say we issued the RFP in 2021, say we were able to get into contract in January or February with DOS. We would issue it right away because we would have it complete. So then, I mean, I have to be fair, give a consultant a month to respond in this because it's so comprehensive in what we put in this RFP. And the city would take, you know, possibly two or three weeks to do this election after, depending on how many responses are received, review, and interview, so that he would instantly start the process. So then, it could be done in 18 months.
Okay, great. The sooner, honestly, the sooner, that's, that's great. That's good to hear. Other, any other comments, questions on what is going to be a very monumental process for us to undertake? So, any questions from anyone?
The only thing I guess that comes to mind is, you know, hearing about how the previous, previous plan got subcontracted out. That sounds like it probably wasn't to our benefit, and I'm just kind of curious.
It really was.
It was?
It was, absolutely. Richard Swizz was amazing, and we were very fortunate to get him.
No, was that my chance, or is that something that consultants do a lot?
No, no, I don't want to speak poorly of the AKR. It wasn't a good experience. There were some changes in that company at that time, and they had to close an office, and some employees that were assigned to our plan had left. And so, we were able to work with them to find someone that was acceptable to the city and to government at that time.
Okay. Where, where are these folks, where do they generally come from, out of Buffalo, or?
They're all over New York State.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? So, I have forwarded, Carrie, you were helpful, you kind of passed that working document off to me, and it passed along to all of the Aldermen, and so now you've given us an updated version here. I would ask each of us to take this, read through it. How can we help?
Okay, I want to let you know it's not updated from the one I emailed.
Okay, okay.
I just want you guys to have a good conversation.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
And I mean, if you want to read through that, and if you have any suggestions, or if you see, like, there's something glaring I missed, or if you don't agree with the scope of work I created, if, I mean, you could just let the mayor and me know, and, or we can discuss it again, after you guys have time to digest it and see if, hey, is this what she's laid out, if this is where we want to go, if this is what we want out of this? Because it's not, it's not the 2005 document. Like, I actually just left that on my desk and said, "Let's start fresh." I mean, there will still be some things that are quite similar in it, but it's not going to be like the same table of contents, that's for sure. We've progressed in life and in New York and the city from 2005 to 2021. So, I think that would be really helpful if you could review and provide some feedback to me.
Okay. I mean, beyond that, what I can provide, at least on behalf of a council, is, you know, support, not only in that regard, but also in, in the context that this needs to get done. And $100,000 is a crazy amount of money, but to look at the return that we've received from having a comprehensive plan, when we look at our city as a whole, as our downtown, and the number of grants that we've received, I mean, you've clarified that before, getting, having a comprehensive plan in place helps us pursue additional grant funding.
And it does help you when reviewers are looking at your application. I'm able and fortunate, not that ours hasn't expired, so I can literally be writing an application and refer to a goal and attach those pages or refer them to the website to show that, hey, this is in line with what we wanted to do. And you can sometimes gain points in an application, and that could be the difference whether your community gets funded and you're a couple of points over another one, and isn't fortunate enough to have that working document.
Okay. All right. That's, yeah, exactly. That's, that's great. That's, so I think this is, is needed, and I think that whether, you know, essentially 10, perhaps 10 cities, if everyone is going for $100,000, there's only $1 million, perhaps 10 cities get awarded.
Right.
So, you know, and you said this is really, you know, the first time in a couple of years they put this money out there.
It's the first time ever.
Okay.
Since I've been doing this, I've never seen the state, we've been asking for years, could you allocate, I mean, they'll do local water plant revitalization plans, it's how we did the Allen River public access, and, but I've never, in all my time, seen it for a comprehensive development plan. I mean, it's exciting, but yeah, like you said, we have like 10 communities, we're going to get it.
So, whether this is something that we have to focus on as a council? I was really excited on a teleconference the other day with Siemens, legislator Rick Smith from Olian, told us that he would support getting the funding for us from the county legislature. If we needed $100,000, he could, he could take care of that for us. So, I mean, I think everyone realizes how important this is to our, to our long-term strategy. So, it's kind of all hands on deck. So, any way that we can support and move this along, I'm on board, so. Mayor?
No, Carrie did a fantastic job explaining this, and I'm sure she will have the plan ready to go before the 30th, and we'll get it, we'll get it in there, so.
Great, great work.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Carrie. All right. So, at this time, what I would do is continue until we kind of get a little bit more formalized application out the door here. I'm going to go ahead and postpone this PL. Could I get a second on that, please?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Robinson. All in favor? I opposed. Okay, so this PL is postponed. There are no new referrals, there is no approval of committee reports. Any need to, we're good. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn strategic planning then. Could I get a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Barner. All in favor? I opposed. All right, we are adjourned strategic planning, and moving the thing off to Chairman Robinson.
All right, I've called to order the Public Safety Committee for Tuesday, June 1st, 2021. Let the record show, all committee members are present with the exception of all the persons Witt and Gonzalez. Let's see. Approval of amendments. Let them make a motion to approve the amendments from the previous committee meeting. Need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Anastasia. Then unfinished business?
All in favor.
All in favor?
I.
I have it. Unfinished business, we have none. And new referrals for consideration. This is something I wanted to bring up. There's two discussions. The first one was driver pedestrian awareness. And I wanted to bring up some things that I've noticed around town as I drive around, and some of the comments on Facebook, some of the chatter around the city about the scooters, some of the legislation that's on the books about the ability to ride through town. Those are things that we, as a council, we hope to work on here in the future. As far as the safety of our kids, our elderly, and our family that are using our roads today, I think it's the responsibility of the drivers and the pedestrians to look out for their surroundings and to pay attention to where they're going. The interesting fact that I found pedestrian deaths make up 16% of the total deaths, traffic deaths, in the U.S. in five states. In those five states, they represent 43% of the U.S., and of those five states, New York is one of them. Majority of those accidents were all related to cell phone, and the elderly and children were the most vulnerable. So, while each state differs, you are required to stop at pedestrian crosswalks in all 50 states. I want to use the circle as an example because that seems to be a hot topic in this region. I've stated before that in DC and Washington DC, and if I could just stay in New York, and Bay Street, Orchard Park, and Buffalo, a lot of those circles up there are two-lane, some are single-lane, and here in Olian, we're fortunate to have a single lane. And when a driver approaches a circle, it's the driver's responsibility to watch for pedestrians, cars, trucks, kids, cyclists, scooters. You're required to yield to the right of way. And in this case, when you approach a circle, you're yielding the right of way to the left because the vehicles are coming from your left. And if there's no vehicle or person to yield to, then you can proceed. No stop is required unless you don't have a right of way. The traffic is backed up by, in the circle area because of the drivers. The drivers tend to stop instead of yielding there, and that causes everything to back up. The case study that I found, when exercising right of way, pedestrian has a duty to heed any danger confronting. This means you must watch for the vehicles, and contrary to belief, you can be liable if you don't heed the danger. I know when my kids are younger in Olian High, and then I've come across a few pedestrians when they're jaywalking, they will yell at you and tell you that they have the right of way. That case study tells you that while you do have the right of way, you also have the right, or you have the responsibility of heeding the danger, and the danger is the vehicle if you're jaywalking. Also, contrary, under common law, the fact that a driver never saw the pedestrian in crosswalks does not excuse conduct where a driver should have seen the pedestrian. A perfect example of this for us, unfortunately, is when we're driving down Green, Henley, State, Washington, and Buffalo, heading west in the evenings, and the sun is in your eyes. You are responsible for watching for people when you're driving, and for our kids as well. So, I just wanted to illustrate this. None of this is new, a lot of us are aware of this, but we have to be aware of our surroundings. We have to try to get away from the complacency of paying attention to our phone, our radio, eating, sightseeing, things of that nature. The council will need to revisit the bike, scooter, skateboard measures to limit riding in the immediate downtown district, but we need to open up the sidewalks to be able to ride where there isn't a bike lane. And also, we need to limit the speed of any of the powered equipment to 10 to 15 miles per hour for safety of the public and the rider. If we have a family out riding, the object isn't a race to your next destination, the object is to enjoy the family activity. So, I just wanted to open that up for the council, if anyone wants to discuss that.
Alderman Robinson, what, in that last statement, it does bring to question, I think, perhaps a larger conversation that this council should entertain at some future junction, and that is not only limiting the speeds of the vehicles, like, you know, scooters, you know, that seems to be the answer, but what about the 2,000-pound machines that can kill people, right, like you first talked about? As we move more towards the concept of walkability, bikeability, and scooterability in our city, do we have a discussion of reducing our speed to 25 miles an hour, perhaps? And I, I'm just throwing that out there tonight, obviously, that is a much larger discussion, but, or at least have zones like where our white boulevards that we're looking into in neighborhoods, maybe that is the area where you reduce your speed to 20 or 25 miles an hour. You know, cutting five or 10 miles an hour off the speed limit isn't going to make someone's commute from the center of town to Tops, to the grocery store, two hours to get there. It's going to add, you know, probably an additional minute or two. And at the, the whole time, we're creating a safer environment for people to use multiple modes of travel. And so, that is something of what you just brought up. Set a lightbulb off saying, maybe we need to also take a look at the, the speed that we have for our vehicles. Thank you. Anyone else?
One of the things that, at a motor vehicle hearing back in my former days, and it was about a, just what you're talking about, drivers seeing what's there, pedestrians seeing what's there, and the motor vehicle referee made a statement that as drivers, you are to see what is to be seen out there. And, you know, you're right, I think you're spot on with a lot of, a lot of this, the whole thing. But one thing, you know, New York State makes a lot of laws to do with driving, that one thing that I'm seeing is, you know, when it's a distracted driver, it's also distracted pedestrians. One thing that I've seen is, you know, when it's a distracted driver, it's also distracted pedestrians. When they walking down the street on your cell phone, talking on your cell phone, crossing the street, there's a big distraction to them. I, I hope that, uh, at some point in time, New York City will take a look at that also. Uh, even on bikes and scooters and that, using your cell phone, why are you, you're as distracted also? So, uh, that's, that's the kind of thing I wanted to make.
That's it, Bill, just to bounce off that, I've seen now a number of people riding, you know, the electric scooters with headphones on.
Yeah.
Uh, that's, that's asking for a disaster.
Yes.
If you can't hear, I'm constantly looking over my shoulder to see if a vehicle's coming up, you know, on my side. If, if you can't hear, if you're not aware of your surroundings, that's a recipe for disaster, so, uh, so that's a great one.
Something that kinda, kinda dawned on me and Vernon while we're sitting here, I mean, uh, being on the council last year and a half, I realized we're really trying to push our, our image as a walkable city. Um, and you mentioned the speed limit, you, you know, maybe twenty-five miles an hour makes sense for the whole city. I'd be interested to know what people think about that. Um, you know, if you're, if you're gonna aim towards walkable, I think that makes, you know, it makes more sense at least to consider it. I think, you know, you're going to Pennsylvania, most villages and cities, the speed limit's twenty-five all around anyway. Um, the other thing, uh, you know, in my last ten years, I've, I've taught some driver classes for places I've worked at, and something that you s, that I've noticed dropping, you know, as we get more into the technology and distractions, uh, pedestrians and motorists, is that, is the concept of making eye contact with each other. Uh, people in general don't seem to wanna make eye contact with each other, just generally, so you'll notice they don't, between pedestrians and drivers, and that's an important thing to do, because when you both see each other, you've confirmed to each other that you, that you know you're there and what you're intended on doing. Um, and maybe there's just something simply, it's, you know, it sounds dumb to put signs up everywhere, right? But maybe if there's places that are risk, you know, just signs that say, make eye contact, something to that effect, will get people to get back and have it, if you want to, or thinking about it at least.
The only comments I had is, there's not too many people I talk to that are really happy with these roundabouts, but they're here, and we're not gonna go for a long time, but, uh, the two roundabouts that I get complaints about is coming off of, uh, a North Union Street extension, Route sixteen, and West State Street, and East State Street, is the people on State Street and that extension on Route sixteen feel that they have the right of way, and they don't have to stop or yield at all, and they're coming at, especially on Union Street down by the hospital, they're coming onto the roundabouts at thirty-five, forty miles an hour, and they're not stopping, and they're depending on the oncoming traffic to stop. So I don't know if I have any complaints about that, or if there's any ideas of how we can solve that.
I really don't have a lot of complaints about, uh, North Union Street, uh, by the seven eleven. I know it's a, it can be a problem, but we have, we don't have a lot of accidents there. As far as the scooters, it's one thing that I'm concerned is in the business district, them being on the sidewalk, and, so, I mean, right now, it's, it's a problem just trying to control bicycles and the pushers.
I think too what the city should, if there's a grand scale, I don't know, but those, uh, those crosswalks that have those blinking yellow flashing things, uh, those rarely work and get your attention, and there's some major crosswalks, and I, that I call major crosswalks in the city that don't have those.
Right.
Uh, down by Tim Hortons would be one, down by CVS is another, about a mile. I mean, those crosswalks you're entering basically late summer, 'cause the weeds are starting to grow, you're running at those at your own risk. And so, if there's a way, we could put some more flashing beacon lights up throughout North Union Street, I think that would be a great safety feature.
I mean, we're doing something, Bob's got a, the pedestrian safety plan, you know, that's a whole project. Granted, I can't pull off top of my head at the specific locations, but we are getting some more of those, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, yeah, the beacon will be on Constitution at the, uh, uh, trail crossing there, at, uh, at, uh, near Twenty-Fourth Street, I guess you'd call it there. And, uh, and then there'll be modifications, uh, Washington West, uh, First and North Union. And, uh, there's one more that I don't know.
I think Main, Main Street.
Yeah, maybe a Main Street, yeah.
Yeah, some of them.
Yeah, the street, like, uh, one of the things, uh, the, the bleak, the flashing beacon lights, that was put in to help with the people with mobility, hearing, and sight, uh, you know, that was put in for them. And, uh, I know Bob has said before that the state, uh, I believe, uh, does not want, does not want them put in at intersections. Uh, 'cause you can't just, you know, flash one, so you'd be putting at every point. So, and it goes back to what, uh, what Vernon said right at the beginning. Uh, a lot of this is, uh, you know, driver, uh, drivers have to become more, uh, tuned to what's going on. And, uh, you know, is it, uh, can enforcement help? Yes, it can help. One of the things that I've noticed, and, and take a look sometime with the flashing beacon lights, that if you cross the street without turning, hitting those buttons and the flashing going, people, after a while, people don't pay attention to that, they get so used to the beacon being there, that it's, it's the human nature that, you know, you don't see it, you don't think there's anything there. So it all comes down to drivers have a big responsibilities, drivers are to see what's to be seen out there. And the same way pedestrians, yes, you have a right, uh, pedestrians at crosses have a right to, uh, uh, have the right of way, but they can't just step out in the traffic, they have to, you know, they have to take a look and see what's coming to, and be cautious to.
Could, can I follow up on that, Bill, that you brought up, um, and maybe the police chief? It's one of these that, like, do they, don't they, is that a ticketable offense? You know, I've always heard a pedestrian has the right of way, that if you're standing at the, the side of the road at a, at a crosswalk, um, a car should yield and stop for you. Is that something that, after car, after car, after car, they blow by you, is that a ticketable offense, chief?
If they're getting ready to cross, if they're gonna step out in the traffic, and someone goes past them, yeah, that's a ticketable offense.
Okay. And is that something that maybe we could consider cracking down on?
Sure, we did this a couple of years ago, we actually, uh, put people out there and, uh, wrote several tickets.
I mean...
Yeah, and I got, I think, I think it's probably time, you know, I, I try to keep an eye out for that sort of thing. I've got times where I stop, and I'm waiting, right, and nobody realizes I'm stopped for the guy cornering the carskeep. You know, so you'll be backing up traffic unnecessarily just because nobody's paying attention.
Not in the other hand, you get pedestrians that'll stand like they're gonna cross, you stop for them, and they'll wait, and then they'll motion you out.
Right.
And I found that's illegal in some states, uh, but that's why I wrote that, uh, be, uh, in all fifty states, you're required to stop for a pedestrian at a crosswalk, but some states you're not allowed to actually walk up to that, that point.
So what we've done in the past, what we've done in the past is we'll put an officer out on plain clothes, and then have a couple other officers to watch. And if they go past the person in the crosswalk, they'll call out to the car, let the car see them, so that's an idea that we've done.
Do you do again?
Uh, I think it's, I think it's a fabulous idea, I mean, you know, it's, it's, um, again, it's changing the culture and the mentality of not only pedestrians, but also drivers too. And, um, and, and, you know, something that's, obviously, you guys know I'm out with my kids, you know, uh, all the time, whether we're walking or we're biking, and, and nothing is worse than, I, I don't know if it was Jason just said, like, one side of the road will stop, and so you're walking out into the crosswalk, and you've got your family in tow, and the other lane just keeps blowing right by you, just keeps driving right through, and, and it's like, you know, um, again, we need to change the image of our city, that, uh, we crack down on that, um, that's, that's, I got, sorry.
I think Jason made a really good point too, eye contact is huge, you know, maybe we could put something on our Facebook, just reminding people of that, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, it, it works, you know, when people, when you, when you see each other, you're not gonna go run somebody over, and you're not gonna get hit, no matter what's going on, if you see the person in control, so.
We'll put something out there.
Thank you.
And before I move on to the next discussion, I just wanted to end that with, you know, we, again, we just wanna, uh, look out for the safety of our residents in Olian, uh, to build their kids, elderly, and, uh, those families that are out there enjoying themselves while they're walking through town. Uh, moving on to the next discussion, uh, improving Olian's image. Uh, the, actually, the, the driver pedestrian awareness kind of ties into this, uh, but I, I wanted to discuss that a little bit, uh, from numerous things that I've noticed over the years, and, uh, I, I wrote something up there, I'll just read from that. Uh, in the wake of May twenty-fifth, George Perry Floyd's, uh, Junior's firm one-year anniversary, uh, this debt, uh, the U.S. is still trying to find peace and harmony, uh, and only in New York, we are still trying to find that same peace and harmony. Uh, diversity, inclusion, and equity committees have been with some companies and some municipalities for years, while others, like the city of Olian, are just creating one. Uh, even some of the local colleges are just forming, uh, such committees, uh, JCC being one of them. Uh, the Olian School District is currently working on, uh, the same exact thing. Uh, this is where we need to start with, uh, teaching real American history. This should be the stomping grounds for making change, starting with our youth. Uh, there is an errand, I like to call it, uh, or some people will say it's an air ignorance, uh, within the city that Olian doesn't bear with some of the state's problems like racial bias, injustice, police inequalities, homelessness, drug abuse, or felony crimes. Uh, I'd agree that we aren't on the same level of disparity, but we are suffering some of those same fates as the larger cities, we're just not suffering on the same level. Uh, we are suffering from loss of good-paying jobs, declining population, and a lack of identity of an intrigued or squirreled city. Uh, we as a city are trying to create a new vision, rebuild our infrastructure, create new and interesting ideas from multiple generations, and most importantly, we wanna listen to the people on what they want. We are encouraging new ideas, new philosophies, and new strategies, but we need to cut back on the trolling, cut back on the finger pointing, cut back on the negativity. We can't make progress if we're stuck in the past. If you're not helping with the solution, then you're part of the problem, so therefore, I wanna challenge every single person in the city of Olian to make a change, make a difference by helping to provide constructive feedback. And notice that I didn't say positive feedback, but constructive. There is a way to convey our thoughts and information without the negativity. Take your feedback, thoughts, to your alderman, all the persons, and help us to make Olian better. Let's start by collaborating with one another and supporting our local businesses, so that we can get Olian businesses booming again. Let's make changes so that we can improve our living quality and standards. We can obtain funding or grants to help those less fortunate to bring houses up to code through Olian Urban Renewal Agency. Programs like the sidewalk program have already proven that they're working, in fact, decrease, increase in the funding is showing that. And finally, no more status quo, let's make a change so that we can become the standard in the suburban tier that everyone will envy. I want people on I eighty-six and Route sixteen to stop in Olian, not drive through Olian. And how do we do that? By doing everything that I've discussed. It starts within ourselves, improving our schools, investing in all facets of the city, and most importantly, we need to exercise patience, this will not happen overnight. Anyone like that, anything?
Very well said, thank you.
Thanks. Alright.
I'm waiting for, I'll start it now.
Alright. So with that, uh, we'll move on, uh, approval of committee minutes, we have our committee, committee records, we have none. So I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second by Alderman Anastasia, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes had it, we are adjourned.
Happy birthday, Mr. Mayor.